Hello. All right, so good morning, everyone. I see we have some people on the sides. This is a huge room, so please, if you in the meantime can come closer, it will be appreciated, so we can be all. I assume some people are still grabbing the coffees, so they may come in the meantime, so please, from the sides, if you can come closer to us. Welcome on the invited special session. We shall be discussing our national guideline and synthesis development within the National Institute for Quality and Excellence in Health, we call NICS, in the Czech Republic. I myself, I am Miloslav Klugar, and head of the Method Center of the NICS. And let me to introduce our other speakers for the session. And it's my dear colleague and deputy in clinics of the head of Method Center, Professor Vladimir Černý. We have a director of our institute, Professor Ladislav Dusek. We have a deputy head of the Method Center, Dr. Rituca Klugarová. And we have our colleagues, our information specialist, Jana Ampavel Kopeční, who are sitting just in front. They will not be talking, but helping to facilitate. And talking, we will have also Dr. Dagmar Tučková, our senior methodologist, and Dr. Dana Vygasova, our methodologist. Okay, excellent, thank you very much. So we can start with the first presentation and then first disclosures. We don't have any direct financial conflict interest in the context of this presentation. However, we have couple of those, we can say they are intellectual ones. They're coming from the fact that we are actually in our country leading the Cochrane Collaboration, and all my colleagues are members of these centers, also the Czech Great Network, also Czech GBI Center of Excellence. And we are proud to be organizational member of the Guidelines International Network. So what we prepared for you today, for these 90 minutes, is to introduce you really what is the NICS, how you work, because we receive several questions about actually how we do. Many people were very interested about how actually we do and maintain established our prospective central registry of the national guidelines and rapid recommendations and quality indicators. So that was idea motivation actually why we put this session together. This session is also recorded, so those who missed the beginning because of coffee, they will be able to see it later. So for introduction, what is NICS? We have the best person here, Professor Dusek, who will make the introduction. Then I will explain about our methods and how we actually developing clinical guidelines and rapid recommendations. Then we will be discussing, and it will be Dana, who will be saying about how the prioritization of guidelines and rapid recommendation works. Then we will be speaking about the our NICS prospective registry of the guidelines, which I think is quite innovative approach. And then we will show you our cases. So the first case about rapid recommendations, screening of the prostate cancer. At the moment, this rapid recommendation is actually in a public review, and we'll explain later what the public review means. And a second case, a second case in the rapid recommendation, which at the moment is in public review. It's a public review where Professor Černý is not only methodologist, but also the head content expert as a chairman of the medical society. And then we'll go follow up the panel discussion, because we'll be also showing some of the challenges we have, and we would be interested in what are your experiences within this field to learn from each other, and then it will be the sum up. So for what is NICS, I would like to invite our director, Professor Dusek, who will tell the introduction.
Hi, decent gentlemen. Thank you very much for inviting me and surprise for me, because I did not expect to speak here. And I do not know what the slide contains, because it was prepared by Miloslav, so we will see. Surprising for you, surprising for me. But what is NICS is clear, it's a newly born body. Currently, it celebrates one year birthday, and it's just advisory board, let's say, of our Minister of Health, and it works under the umbrella of Ministry of Health of the Czech Republic. It's designed, it was designed as primary methodological and communication center implementing some relevant guidelines, promoting the evidence-based medicine in our country, as well as establishing the IT background for it and some communication, let's say, background for it. The word "national" means that we would like to work nationally. It means to cover all segments of care, not only medical care, health care, but also social segments of care. And but not only nationally. As you saw, we have already established Czech Centers of Cochrane, GIN, GBI, and great. And thank you very much for supporting us in this mission. And the centers were again established under the umbrella of the Ministry of Health and our institute, which is the Institute of Health Care, Informatics and Statistics. Second slide, what is not NICS? NICS is not a new building full with officers and demanding money from our national budget, because once you demand some money and some financial investment from our government, you get just nothing. So currently, our institutional budget is zero euros. And the NICS works like methodical center, and the core of its activities is based on projects. So we try to get our own projects, research projects from our research agencies in cooperation with professional, medical professional societies, nursing societies, and so on. And this is the major source how to finance the activities and the mission of a NICS. NICS cannot and does not want to change any competencies in our country, so it fully respects the position of Ministry of Health, our professional societies, professional chambers, like chambers of physicians and so on. And which is very important, also position of our reimbursement companies. We call them health insurance companies, which are responsible for reimbursement of health care. What NICS should be or what is the ambition, let's say, to be, it's, as I've already said, institute that coordinates the agendas, because many agendas that are related to evidence-based medicine and bringing the evidence to health care are completely fractionated in our country. It started, it starts from IT background and data collection and some individual registries, separated registries to institutions. So some coordination of communication, coordination of activities of institutes, research institutes, healthcare institutes, providers is vitally important how to complete the mission. And of course, methodical goal, unifying, it means, as you can see here, unifying methodologies regarding standardization, organization, evaluation under the auspices of great methodology, if I say it well. And hopefully, my last slide is the organization. As I've already said, it's not new building with completely newly recruited officers. It's just a virtual center, let's say, based on grants and based on separated and particular projects. And it's, the head of the whole structure is executive board, which is organized in the Ministry of Health. And then we established and we are establishing continuously something like expert teams, which are focused on some particular areas like intensive care, as you will see in the presentation of Professor Černý, mental health and nursing and so on. And that's all, the umbrella projects we respect and we do fulfill is, this is in Czech here, is Health 2030, which is the strategy, let's say, our national strategy, how to develop health care, how to challenge aging of the population, how to challenge lack of fully implemented disease management programs, how to challenge insufficient compliance of population to prevention programs, et cetera, et cetera. This is the Health 2030, and NICS started to work under it and to fulfill these goals. Is that all from me? Two more slides I have. Thank you very much, Miloslav. My pleasure. So program goals, which are set, and currently it has been updated to 2025, as you see here. And these are the project objectives. As I've already said, the activities are relatively broad, and it covers not only evidence-based medicine and implementation and publishing of guidelines and rapid recommendations, et cetera. Not only evidence-based business, let's say, but also implementation of internal programs of management of quality, not only in hospitals, but also in out, in other segments of care, including social and social health care. And external evaluation, this is my responsibility in NICS, the development of indicators of quality, metrics, statistical measures, how to evaluate, how to quantify accessibility of care, equity of care, and outcome measures, as well as quality measures. And last but not least, of course, prevention. Keyword and our, from my point of view, the only chance, the chance how to survive aging of our population. So facilitation of all kinds of prevention, from primary prevention and promotion of healthy lifestyle to secondary prevention programs, population-based programs like cancer screenings. And as you heard in the introductory lecture of our Minister of Health, we have currently launched completely new, well-organized population-based screening of prostate cancers. And I think that last but not least, publication, development of some communication, of some portals communicating with stakeholders, lay public and so on, because once you issue, once you have some evidence, you can even get some data supporting the evidence, you must inevitably translate it to stakeholders, to political authorities, to make it easy to read and to make it easy to be understood. Thank you very much for your attention, and thank Miloslav for my slides.
Thank you very much, Slagislav. And you know, we are very glad you can be today with us, because I know how busy you are. And so, you know, I prepared your slides actually and just translated them into English, so you know, all credit to you. These slides are finally mine, and something what I, what's something I love to do. And that's actually to speak about the methodology and about the methodology and approach, about how we are systematically developing the national guidelines and rapid recommendations, and how actually our central registry works. But first of all, I would like to say a bit about our journey, because you know, building such institute even without funding, but actually something working as advisory for the ministry and trying to systematize all around the quality assurance program, where the guidelines, it can't happen, you know, just like that for one year. So you see, we've been working on, and the journey was actually quite long. So the journey started for us in 2007, and that was the time when I was actually PhD student. And that's the first time actually I received some systematic training about evidence-based medicine. And it was thanks to the project, which in a title had clinical practice guidelines. We didn't know what the guidelines were at that time, I mean clinical practice guidelines, and we didn't know nothing about EBM. So that was a time where actually, thanks to this grant, there were enough money to send the core staff to the Oxford University, and we've been studying there the EBM. So this is the first time I systematically learned about the EBM. And then after this, we're speaking back about to Palacki University. Thanks to Jana Marečková, which I hope is somewhere here. We actually had quite huge grant that time on the newly established Faculty Health Sciences. And we established the first GBI center there that time as affiliated group. We both went to Adelaide, Australia, to our deal colleagues who are here and who are one of the key partners for the Global Evidence Summit. And we learned how to do systematic reviews, until the time we didn't know how to do it, honestly. So you can imagine, Jana was very brave, and she promised to the huge project that we will complete two systematic reviews, although none of us know what is it. So that was how it was. However, we learned very quickly, and within the lifetime of the project, we not only completed two systematic reviews, we completed them eight. And we've been promoted in less than three years to the Center of Excellence from the affiliated group. And then, as the course went, I, it was a great moment when I was introduced to Professor Dusek. And actually, he had, he was again very brave, because you know, he went into the clinical practice guidelines, although there were not many of us who actually really know how to do properly the guidelines, you know, speaking back in 2017. It was also the time when I attended the Global Evidence Summit, the first one. As I said, in opening, was the best conference I ever attended. And you know, and that came inspiration that you know probably there are more collaboration units around the globe, which actually we may be able to start. And because we needed more competence and more confidence in a guideline development, we established in our country the GREAT Center and also the Cochrane Center, and we're speaking about 2018. It was exactly the time where actually the national first pilot project of the clinical practice guideline started. And I can say, I can tell you that it wouldn't start it if Ladislav was actually, you know, promoting it and was able to explain this topic and explain its importance to all ministers of health we had at that time, and there were many. So thank you very much, Ladislav, for it. And you know, so this is the national guideline project, and we completed 41 clinical practice guidelines in, let's say, four years with a team who was basically very novice, you know, to that time. And I'm telling this to my colleagues abroad. They're telling, well, it's unbelievable, it's impossible. We did it, but in our country, we hearing, well, it's not enough. You know, you should have hundred, you should have 200. And that's actually the reason why we started and we thinking how actually to make the whole process faster. And that's the reason why we came with the rapid recommendations. They really can be done fast, but still there are some challenges what we would like to actually discuss with you. Well, and very now, we are at this stage in the Global Evidence Summit, which was originally planned for 2021, postponed two times because of COVID and because of the Russian war in Ukraine, and now we are here. So as mentioned, this is what was completed in the first pilot project. The majority of those guidelines, and that's the reason why we were able to accomplish it, was that we used the newly introduced methodology of the GREAT Working Group, which was a GREAT adolopment. It's combining the methods we know for guideline development, which is adoption, adaptation, and de novo development. When I'm speaking actually in a time, how long you develop it, you all know who are experienced in guideline development. You know that depends on the size of the guideline, number of the clinical or key questions it has. But let's say, in average, for adoption, it might be around the six months. For adaptation, it might be around the year. For de novo development, it could be up to five years. Imagine you have more than 50 questions. For each question, you need to develop systematic review with proper meta-analysis, metasyntesis depends on the methodology. So it's really taking long time. The adolopment, effectively combining all the methods. So if you find a guideline which is suitable, which is high quality, we actually have the tools to appraise its quality. And thanks to GREAT adolopment approach, we actually effectively combine all those methods. So for example, for questions which are chairmans of medical societies, because those are the main guideline developers, we as a method center doing the support, but actually those are professional medical societies who are leading the clinical side. And that must be this way. It can't be, it can't be someone with a training in methodology or epidemiology as me or as my colleagues. So it's a huge thanks to the societies who like to collaborate with us, and thanks to them, actually, we have the guidelines. So what methods actually within the NICS we use? So as mentioned already, NICS was established January 2023, and we are not starting from scratch, eh? Because we had the pilot, pilot project already there with a methodology, but it needed some of the changes. Because as we were telling to all clinicians, because they were asking us from the beginning, is the project, is the pilot project something what will just end in five years and nothing from it? Because no one, no one would like to do it. And I told them, no. We will do all our bests to continue, because otherwise, you know, it will make no sense, you know, just to make few guidelines and nothing from it, not continuing, it would not make sense. So I was very glad that actually we were able to move this forward and establish the NICS, who actually systematized the guideline development under the Ministry of Health. So methodology to use for us, it was then obvious. We were, and as you, as you see, and if you know me, I am not the big fan of reinventing the wheels. So we rather look what is the best, what exists, what we can use, adapt, contextualize. And you know, thanks to this, we have our collaborators, and that is a GIN. And GIN actually completed McMaster checklist already 2014. Now with Holger Schonemann, we will be updating it soon, which will be, which will be great. I'm looking forward to this, to this job. And the GIN McMaster checklist is a huge systematic review of all existing methodologies nationwide and taken the best from it. The core part of the guideline development, which actually you can see over here, is basically GREAT. So the GREAT methodology is the cornerstone of our national guideline methodological approach as well. However, you know, there were several challenges. And the first one was when we actually completed our first five pilot national guidelines. And I just seen all of them, you know, next to each other, and they for the first look were completely different. Why? Because it was adoption of the different guidelines, which actually, you know, exist. So one was from Cardiological Society, the other one was from the Oncological Society, otherwise was from the NICE guidelines. And they all actually had a different visual style of presenting recommendations, and most importantly, of actually rating the certainty of the evidence and also actually showing us the strengths of the recommendation. So that's motivated us, our team, to actually, you know, think about it and think about the solutions. And also, with the collaboration of Holger Schonemann, who is co-author of this paper, we developed this methodology, which then later on, we used in an international map of the recommendations for COVID-19. So I was very glad that this work was used not, and is used not only in our country, but also in other settings, mainly on the map. And how it looks like. So here is just example of one. So this is the guideline from the national German organization, something like our NICS, but much older and more experienced, AWMF. And these colleagues are actually developing guidelines. They currently using the GREAT methodology, so now it will be easier. But this was the guideline which was older. And you see actually on this picture, the issue, yes? So you see that the level of evidence is 1C and the strength of recommendation is B. Then the other recommendation is EK. If I use, for example, the oncology guideline, they can use, for example, for level of evidence, only letters and only letters and numbers, for example, for the strength of recommendation. So it's, all looks actually different. So what we did, we actually suggested the transformation for all systems we had within the appendice. And we've been actually doing this transformation for all guidelines. So in our national Czech guidelines, which were published in past, you would actually see that they were all visually transformed to the strengths of recommendation and certainty of the evidence within the right column, and they are all unified. So in the end, you know, was the strengths of recommendation across all the guidelines. They are not just different letters, but we keep the source evaluation as well for transparency. So optimal solution for us, when you speak about this, is really, this visual transformation is just step between. The optimal solution really is the GREAT adolopment, which I said was originally published as a concept, not a GREAT guidance 2018. And since that time, we actually look at it and we start to do it. I will not go into the details. If you are interested in it, I have a lecture this week when I'm actually introducing this methodology. However, it's optimal solution. So actually, we going through the prioritization process, researching the most up-to-date and high-quality guideline. It must be GREAT. If it's not GREAT, it's complicated. However, in the world, there are some approaches which are also robust, not necessarily being GREAT. So we just, you know, if this is the case, we can re-gREAT the certainty of that guideline. And then we continue. And if we find that there is a matching recommendation, we follow this way, as I'm showing, through actually the question, do we need to update systematic review or not? If not, we can go directly into the evidence-to-decision framework again. Is it there or not? If it's there, which is ideal situation, we evaluate it. And if our clinicians agree with the context, then we actually don't need to modify it. If you modify it, we can, and we can actually add the evidence to it. So that's basically the approach. And obviously, if you see there is missing recommendation, what is important to our clinical teams, we just develop it de novo. But not hold a guideline, just one question, for example, which can take to our team. Depends on the question. If you are lucky, there is already existing systematic review, so it can ideally take us just five hours, you know, to find the evidence. So this is the GREAT adolopment. And it's published, very recently published paper in Journal of Clinical Epidemiology. And it's the formal GREAT guidance, and the team been working on it actually. And the team been working on it actually three years. And it was a huge effort of, I think, we had more than fifty-five co-authors who've been actually working of this guidance. And I'm very glad that WHO already actually using this methodology as well. And they have a new guidance for contextualized guidelines, which is basically based on the GREAT Adolopment. So development of national guidelines in Rapid Recs. Mentioned that we have the prospective registration of the protocols for all guidelines and rapid recommendations. Jitka will be speaking about this in detail. Then the registration is also for the development of the itself guideline with the indicators of the quality and the rapid recommendations. The rapid recommendations are supported by our project, which is strategic project of the Ministry, Ministry of Health and our institute called Komodor. The scheme of the rapid recommendations development is actually here. So first is the prospective center registry of the guidelines and rapid recommendations. And actually, who can register it? It could be anyone. It could be anyone who fulfill the criteria. And criteria are very simple. They need to follow the national methodology, which is available in Czech as in English on our side. And they need to have approval from particular professional medical society. So in another words, the, any guideline should be actually approved by the chairmen of the particular medical society. Then our team would control it's all complete. And when it's all fine, it's immediately published on the NICS portal. Then for development, again, it could be with our team, with our support or without. But it must be done according to the methodology. And I hope that all methodological steps are clear. And if there is someone with a methodological training in any team, they can complete it even without us. If they do it without us, we'll again check the quality, robustness of the guideline. And then we start the processes, which is the review. The first is actually the internal review with the teams, with at least two experts who are actually called, who are not part of the guideline team, without a conflict of interest. They make the internal review. Then actually, the internal review, we made the feedback and we developed the first version of the guideline. This is already then published on our center registry. And after this, we starting the public review. I mentioned that currently, we have two rapid recommendations in public review. And it means that we are actually letting know about the public review all professional medical societies and all directly managed institutions of the Ministry of Health. So it's very wide public review. At the moment, this morning, I learned, we have one very positive comment, actually, which you just landed about, about it. So I'm very happy about it. This will be ongoing next five days. And after this, as following the process, it will be submitted to our highest board, which is the, in Czech, Židící Rada. In English, it's the, basically the steering committee, chaired by the Ministry of Health. And then it's finally approved, finally published on the website and published on the bulletin of the Journal of the Ministry, Ministry of Health. So the current status of what you can, what you can find in our prospective registry. So you can find there forty-one completed guidelines on the previous project, which we are maintaining and facilitating and updating. Eighty-five newly registered protocols of Rapid Recs and eighteen new practice guidelines, from which eight evidence synthesis are published. Evidence synthesis is a kind of between product of it. It's basically graded result of the systematic reviews for each question. And we publishing them as well. Then two rapid recommendations are completed in a public review and two are completed in the version one at the moment in our registry. And that will be from home. Thank you for attention. And now I'm glad to invite my dear colleague, Dr. Danah Vygaceva, to tell us about how the prioritization process looks and how it works.
So hello, everyone. My name is Danah Vygaceva, and I am a methodologist at NICS. And I would like to tell you a few words about our recommendations and exactly how they were acquired, the topics for the recommendations, how they were acquired, then how the prioritization process looked like and also how the final result of the prioritization looked like. Before I start, just let me say that I have affiliations with all these organizations and I have no any conflict of interest in relation to this presentation. So the first question was how the topics for our recommended recommendations were acquired. Well, they were proposed by these five key groups. It was the Ministry of Health and its directly managed organizations. Then it was the DRG expert team, the National Screening Center, the Joint Accreditation Commission. And finally, also professional medical societies and their representatives could provide topics that they considered as the priority. So we finally ended up with eighty-five rapid recommendation topics and eighteen guidelines. As you can see, that's pretty many. So you can ask, well, how did you prioritize them? The answer you can see here. It was done by Executive Board of NICS, which followed this five criteria. It was patient safety and improving the quality of care. Then the heterogeneity of care provided, which was based on data analysis. Then economic point of view, population view, and high volume versus low volume of care. And these criteria were based on the experience shared at WHO meeting in Copenhagen in 2023. And prioritization was done in a way that if the particular topic achieved all five of these criteria, it got priority A. If one, any one criterion was missing, it could priority B. And in any two criteria missing, priority C, and so on up to D. So how the final results of the prioritization looked like? You can see here, we got nine rapid recommendations with priority A, which you can see here. Then forty-three topics with priority B. So it's just an example, because there were so many. Then twenty-three with priority C. And again, just example, because twenty-three could be too much to put on one slide. And finally, ten with priority D. Yeah, so this is pretty much from my side. Thank you very much for your time, for your attention. And now I will give the floor to Jitka, and she will tell you about our central registry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dana. Yeah, hello, everyone. It's my great pleasure to introduce you, show you the NICS Central Registry, how it looks like and what is it for. Content of this, of this presentation will be what is NICS Central Registry, who will use it, meaning, and of course, purpose. What does NICS Registry enable? And of course, how does it look? So if you, on our webpage, it will looks like this. And what is it? It's essential tool which enables us transparently develop rapid recommendations and guidelines, as Miloslav and Ladislav already, already mentioned. Why? Because it's prospective, it's based on a priori published protocol. So everyone can have a look if we really fulfilled all steps what we planned. And it's, and it's really transparent. Who will use it? Miloslav already mentioned that everyone can, can use it. And it's free if he really fulfill the criteria. Primarily, it's, it's for professional institutions, bodies involved in guidelines and Rapid Recs, like Ministry of Health and directly managed organizations, professional medical health care societies, non-health care societies, providers, et cetera. Meaning and the purpose, you would like to avoid, I think everybody in this room would like to avoid capacity waste, human resources waste, financial waste. So, so why to duplicate something what already exists? Of course, again, transparency, I have to highlight transparency. It also guarantee the methodological correctness, because as Miloslav mentioned, there are several checks, internal review, public review, et cetera. Also control plan updates. Currently finished guidelines, we'll, we'll check in and will update when times right. Control of plan updates. It's also opportunity to collaborate with a partner. Because in case of developing every rapid recommendation, every, every guideline, we invite all stakeholders. We inviting all relevant medical, non-medical societies to collaborate, policymakers, patients, representatives, et cetera. And it's also huge opportunity for international cooperation, because it's, it's there, everything, it's in one place. Everyone can have a look. And, and we, of course, did not reinvent the new wheel. We inspire was outside. And there's outside, GIN Registry, AWFM Registry, Australian Register, NICE Register. So, so we inspire and build on this, their experiences, which are much more longer than others and ours. What does NICS Registry enable? So prospective registration of protocol, approval of the protocol, expert review, approval, disapproval in a, in a version one. Again, approval, disapproval of a version two, final approval and also publication in bulletin of Ministry of Health. And everything is transparently in one place for everyone. So how it looks? This is our, our webpage. And this is the place where you can find NICS Central Registry. If you, if you click on it, you will see this page. And I will show you closer what is inside. There are all links necessary, how it works, how you can use it. There are forms, templates, what you, what you need for like all processes, what I have mentioned before. And there, of course, all information, what I've already set in a, in a previous few minutes. And then there are published all guidelines or rapid recommendations or evidence summaries, what we've already completed or which are in, in preparation. So, so it's here. And, and here is the list of guidelines and rapids. Of course, everything then inside is in, is in Czech language, because these are Czech national guidelines. And, and you can see, as mentioned, Miloslav, two are currently in a, in a review, under review. And, and you can see protocol and also full version is there available. And, and central registry also enables you filter based on, based on type of document, based on methods, based on keywords, based on field. And this is how it looks there. Okay, it's, it's all for me. And I will invite the next speaker, which is Tasha.
Okay, thank you so much, Jitka, for giving me the word. My name is Dagmar Tuchková. And I will talk about development of rapid recommendation related to prostate. Today, we are working on the two prostate rapid recommendation. One is focused on screening. And the second one is focused on the diagnostic PSA level examination. And I would like to introduce you how to work, how to develop the rapid recommendation. In a case, we have the evidence from the guidelines or the systematic reviews. And I will use this early detection of prostate cancer in the Czech Republic Rapid Recs. And the second example will be of the definition of competencies in the indication of PSA level examination when we didn't have the evidence from the guidelines or the systematic review. So we have to started work on it using the expert evidence. This is a little bit of background. I think you all know that in long-term trend, the incidence of prostate cancer is increasing significantly. And I would like to add that both of these Rapid Recs were prioritized by the Executive Board of NICS and approved by Ministry of Health. And they are registered to central evidence. So you can verify based on what Jitka said before a while. At the beginning of every development of guideline, we have to cooperate with the professional medical society. And you can see that for screening Rapid Rec, it was Professional Medical Society of Urology. And for, for the diagnostic Rapid Rec focusing of level of PCA, there are more professional medical societies and this urology, biochemistry and clinical oncologists. And of course, all together with the methodologies from NICS and analysts, which are support for us in, from the point of view that they are doing like the epidemiological analyses, we are working on the development of these guidelines. At the beginning of every Rapid Recs process is establishment of the clinical questions. And as you can see, for the screening prostate, there were five questions. The first was focused on when to start screening for prostate cancer in men without risk factors. The second one was focused on screening in men with risk factors. The third one was about when should prostate screening be stopped, balancing in benefits and harms for the patient. The fourth one was more diagnostic. And we tried to focus on measurement PSA levels, which are on the different levels, less than three or even or more than three in asymptomatic men. And the last one was kind of scoping question, transformed to the clinical one. And we tried to find the answer, whether the presence of lower urinary tract symptoms affect recommendations of our prostate, prostate cancer screening. For every question, we started to search. And we searched in three databases, Epistemonikos, GIN Library and BIG. And all potential sources, if you are speaking about guidelines, were assessed by critical appraisal tool called AGREE II. And there is twenty-three domains and we ranking one to seven. And if you put this ranking from, from two independent reviewers together, it needs to be more than sixty percent of the overall, or total number. So this is like the cut-off point for us to include the guideline. If it's less, then we exclude guideline, because it doesn't have the quality we need. For the systematic review, we use John Abrix Institute Critical Appraisal Tool for the systematic review. In this Critical Appraisal Tool, there is eleven question. And again, we need to have at least ten yes points to include the systematic review into our recommendation. So based on this, we choose four guidelines and one systematic review, because the last question needs to be developed as a de novo recommendation. So the systematic review got eleven points from eleven question and it was able to develop the recommendation. So how it looks in practice? Here is the answer for the one, for question number one. And you can see that the level of evidence is the highest it could be. And then, if the level of evidence is the highest with four plus points, let's say, we are able to suggest the quality indicator. So the quality indicator was suggested for this review question. But it has its own specifics, because it needs to fulfill specific, it needs to be specific, measurable, agreed, realistic and defined in a time. Then we had, we have answers for question number two or three. And you can see that the level of evidence is a little bit... And you can see that the level of evidence is a little bit lower, which is very important, not only for clinicians, but for us as a methodologist, because in the future, there needs to be update of every Rapid REX. And for us, we need to seek for the future, if there is higher level of evidence, and then we can change the recommendation and we can put higher level of evidence. And of course, as I said, if it's the highest, then we can plan, then we can plan the quality indicator. The fourth one is based on expert consensus. Again, it's based on the recommendation from the guideline we choose, but it's the consensus of collective opinions of an expert panel on certain clinical question. And the last one is the example of de novo process. And we used for this the meta-analyses from the systematic review, when we take the meta-analyses and put it into the great program. And we assessed five basic categories, which is risk of bias, inconsistency, imprecision, indirectness, and publication bias. And when we assessed all of these categories, then we get level of evidence. And you can see that in this case, it was very low level of evidence. So we need to search for better systematic review or better proof to have better recommendation in the future. As it was said, this rapid recommendation underwear in the professional review, and now it is in a public review. And we believe that it obviously corresponds with the evidence for screening program in the Czech Republic. And this could be as a support created on the basis of certified methodology approved by Ministry of Health. So this was the first way how we developed the rapid recommendation. But there is another one, because sometimes it happens that there is no existing evidence for certain topic or certain question, and there is a gap in the evidence. So therefore, we have, or I would like to introduce, the Rapid REX, which is called Definition of Competencies in the Indication of PSA Level Examination. And again, the process is at the beginning the same. There were two questions. The first was who are definitions of which expertise should indicate diagnostic PSA in man at the risk of developing prostate cancer? And the second one was searching for specific health situation in which diagnostic PSA should be indicated by other professionals, except general professionals, urologists, radiotherapists, and clinical and radiation oncologists. Because we expected that there would be no evidence available, which was confirmed, we decided to go in a way of expert evidence. For this, there is under the methodology, how to develop rapid recommendation, so-called expert evidence. And we have like the form for it. And as you can see, it is based on professional expertise of every professional who is included in the development of this type of Rapid REX. We are seeking for expert evidence, which means, for example, the number of patients which the certain expert has in this professional career, then characteristics of patient or problem, then description of concept and its specification, then description of context and its specification, then if it's needed, or if it is like suitable, we ask for patient preference and scientific evidence. And the last is the decision, how strong will be the recommendation, if it will be suggested or recommended, and if it will be for or against the recommendation on which is based this expert evidence. Now, in this rapid recommendation, we have lots of things to do, because the evidence or synthesis of the evidence was done. In this rapid recommendation, we have six experts from these three medical professional societies. And now, in very short time, we need to ask the panel of experts to look at the synthesis and evaluate the results of the expert evidence. And then, it will go the same way through the internal review to the public review, and then hopefully, we will finish work on this, and it will go to be implemented in the public in the medicine. So this was two ways how to develop the rapid recommendation, and maybe the proof that even if there is no evidence, there is still something, that we can do something to bring the evidence into the medicine. Thank you so much.
And I would like to invite the last speaker for this session, Professor Cherny.
Good morning, it's coming afternoon. Before I start, don't look at me. Take a look and enjoy the presence of Kinkov Czech guidelines or Czechinkov guidelines and his family. This is a unique opportunity to see the most important team in Czech medicine with regard to guidelines. And part of the team is sitting also in the audience. So I will be slightly deviating my talk compared to the title which was announced in welcoming slides from Miloslov. And I will be talking about clinicians' view on the process of creating national guidelines. Let me just make two points before I'm going on with my talk. I have nothing to disclose. However, I've got some conflict of interest, because I'm sitting on both sides of the subject, as you can see from my affiliations. I'm clinician, I'm working in the field of anesthesiology and intensive care for many, many years on one side. And on the other side, I'm part of the NICAS team, which I'm very proud of. Therefore, I have the chance and opportunity to look at the subject from different perspectives. As you can see on this slide, which is showing what roles I have played in my professional life. As I said, I'm clinician, and at the same time, I'm part of the methodology team of NICAS. And just last guideline, the latest guidelines which we have created is on high-flow nasal oxygen in patients requiring oxygen therapy. When I was thinking about what should be my learning objectives for this very short talk, I would like to discuss selected issues and challenges during the process of developing guidelines in our country, from clinicians' point of view. I would like to discuss in following discussion, what are the key or necessary steps, how we can improve it. And when I attend everyone's talk during many meetings or congresses, my major target is to listen to personal opinion or experience of those who are talking about any subject. And part of my objective here is to share my personal view and opinion on this topic, which could be maybe sometimes for someone quite dissenting, and quite, let's say, starting some maybe wild discussion. So I would like to spend my next five minutes or seven minutes try to answer some questions. And I put those questions as a outline of my talk, as you can see on this slide. So let me just start with question number one. And the question is, what should be, or what is the role of medical societies in creating national guidelines? And the role is very important. We are not able, or you are not able to create any guidelines without participating medical societies or without experts. That's for clear. I have tried to put the list of tasks for medical societies in the process of creating guidelines. And I found at least eight major tasks for medical societies, as you can see on this slide. Expertise and knowledge, research and evidence evaluation, together with methodological teams, to build consensus, to draft guidelines, together with writing team from NICAS. Medical society has also important role to involve all stakeholders for the subject of their guidelines. They should, they are not doing that, but they should be key part for dissemination and education, not only physicians, but also patients. They should be very active in updating those guidelines, and they should be advocates for any guidelines they are part of. And of course, there is a big need to collaborate with the NICAS team, as you can see on this red sentences. And this slide just showing that there is no possibility to do good guidelines without close collaboration between physicians, clinicians, and methodological team. That's for clear. Question number two, what are the areas and maybe reasons where medical societies are failing so far in fulfilling those, let's say, roles or task in process of creating guidelines? Lack of funds, from my point of view, it's not the most important part. But lack of interest, lack of manpower, lack of expertise and knowledge, and there is a huge gap in knowing methodology among, I would say, most of physicians in any field I can see in my practice. In some cases, there is a reason in conflict of interest. And this is very important area of creating guidelines. But in my view, in my opinion, I think one of the most important reason is lack of understanding key principles for being good doctor and to do good medicine and to do good decision-making in our patients. And I will stop for a while in this sentence, because I'm sure that even for methodologies, it's very important to show what it means by saying what are the key principles to do good medicine, to be good doctor, to make good medical practice. I'm sure you all know Michelin Guide, because we probably all like good food. And I can assure you that I don't know any doctor who would not want to be good doctor, who would not want to do good medicine in his or her professional life. And according to statistics, according to evidence, winning dishes in Michelin, they have always only three basic tastes. And it applies the same way for be, to be good doctor, to do good medicine. And I want to show you what are the best ingredients to do good medicine and to do good medical practice. Any clinical decision in any clinical discipline should be always made from, based on three, let's say, ingredients or stones, whatever. Good knowledge of physiology, of the diagnosis, long-term clinical experience, and scientific evidence. Every good decision-making should be based on those basic stones. And the mutual share of the listed basic stones, in many situations or clinical diagnosis may be different, but each of those stones, or let's say components, must be somehow present. Because we have so many diagnoses where we do not have enough evidence on one side, but on the other side, many people have long-term experience with this kind of patients, for example. So think about this rule or axiom in medicine, and it shows clearly and nicely that evidence and data are very important to do good medicine. And we all know evidence-based medicine, as I say, basic principle for modern medicine. But at the same time, the experience is at same value to make a good clinical decision. And we as physicians or clinicians must understand the key role of data synthesis and which are expressed in our guidelines for our decision-making in daily practice. And if you have someone who says, okay, I'm experienced enough, you know, that's enough, no. We always need to use some evidence, if it's available, of course. And to understand those principles should help also to you as a methodologist, to understand how physicians think, how they, let's say, sometimes collaborate. Because many of them, they don't appreciate the role of the importance of data and evidence. Question number three, and basically, I will be opening by this part of my talk following discussion. What should be done or what could be done to make it better? And let me just share my opinion on this talk. And usually in real life, even simple questions, they don't have a simple answers. But there is an exception, and I'm sure this question has quite simple answer. We must increase the interest of clinicians in participating in the developing of guidelines. They should understand that they have to admit that there is a mutual combination between clinical work and participating in guidelines. And probably we all know some clinicians who don't think this way. Don't go to these physicians, take another one. Because even if you have a good experienced doctor without, let's say, appreciating science evidence, this person, regardless if it's man or woman, cannot be good doctor. Avoid those doctors. And to improve this situation, we as physicians must understand and must adapt that participating in creating guidelines should be seen as a relevant area of our job. Guidelines and participating in creating guidelines is a unique tool for promoting evidence-based medicine in our clinical practice. Collaborating or working in the field of evidence synthesis or analysis is a very sexy pathway to academic and professional development and success. And participation in the creation of guidelines is one of the very robust and efficient way how to get recognition and respect by the professional community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Vladimir. Thank you all speakers for this session. We are going exactly according to plan, what we had. So we have now 20 minutes for the panel discussion. Please, here is a microphone, there are microphone also somewhere else. But those who are up and would like to, that is still app, so you can actually send your questions using the app. And I will start with what we, what we finished the panel discussion. And I will start with what we finished the panel discussion. And Vladimir, thank you, this was excellent presentation. And I wish we have more chairmans of medical societies as you, as you are the example of the great collaboration. And I'm glad to say that actually from our experience working in this field already since 2018, there is more and more who are almost like you, more and more. So, you know, that's great. And we are very grateful for the collaboration because exactly as you said, it's not methodologies to developing guidelines. We are support, those are clinicians and clinical teams. We very glad to collaborate and we're doing our best to facilitate this. And on the other side, I think it's very logical and very correct that the Ministry of Health is systematising the development of the guidelines and having them on the one wings. And that's all what we discussed in the NICE. So thank you, thank you very much for this. So now, any comments, questions for us? Yes, please, there is a microphone behind you.
You mentioned systematic reviews. And most of the presentation was about doing the guidelines. And I'm just wondering if your organisation or group goes down and does the systematic reviews as well from time to time, right?
Yes, exactly. And if you can please introduce yourself, who are you?
Oh, sorry. I'm Rose Rilevall, I'm with the American Cancer Society. And I'm an information specialist. And so we do systematic reviews. And at, to the point where we've had to come up with different names, key informants, technical expert panels, you know, invited, you know, sometimes even on our team. It's at the systematic review level, we often are really reaching out to get these clinicians, mostly to bring us the information. And most of them seem very happy to be like, oh, I'll be on a systematic review or I'll learn how to do this. And I know that at that level, there's lots of opportunities for bringing in clinicians to be doing the work and also knowing that that systematic review is part of a guideline. So I agree.
Thank you very much for the question and comment. And exactly where you see our two information specialists from our team. So I'll be glad if you can connect and share your experiences. And yes, well, our approach is that, yeah, you know, first, as I said, we are not big fans of reinventing the wheels. So we're starting from the guideline. So if we, for each question we have, our information specialist starting to search, is there any guideline development? If not, then we continue and look for systematic reviews, searching Epistemonikos, which is a great source for us. And then if you don't find any systematic review, then we do the rapid, if it's rapid recommendation, then rapid review ourselves or the full review. And for this, we already inviting clinicians. And that's one of the motivation for them, that actually they are co-authors or in some cases even leading authors, if we agree. So of those results, of those rapid recommendations or systematic reviews, and they are always the principal authors of the guidelines. Because as I said, they are those who are developing them. And without them, we can't do them. So that's the approach, yes, so starting from there. And ideally is that we find, you know, either high-quality guideline or systematic review. It's really saving a lot of time for us. So that's... Yeah. Exactly, that's the win-win situation. Okay, excellent. Anything else? Anyone would like to touch base with us? There's a questions, yes, so Prisitka? Doesn't need to be me who moderates, there is a microphone.
Yeah, okay. There's a question from Jako Berger, scientific staff member of Dutch College. Do you include cost effectiveness and/or budget impact analysis in the process of guideline development? You will be the best to answer, Miroslav.
Yes, thank you, Jako. Where are you, over there? Thank you. Jako is the author of actually the first adaptation guidelines we had. And Jako, we translated your work and we started with it. So thank you for your work you did in this field. And yes, as a part of the evidence to decision criteria we're using and a great methodology, cost effectiveness is always one of the criteria we're looking for when we actually having all the evidence. And some of the questions on the national guidelines are focused on the cost effectiveness, yeah? It's usually, I would say, in almost all we see it. But we're looking for cost effectiveness all the times as part of the E T D, if we are able to search for this evidence, either direct or indirect. Indirect means that we have our own cost effectiveness analysis. Thanks to our institute directed by Lajislav, we do. Because we do a lot of the cost effectiveness analysis as well, based on the national data. But for some, if we don't have the data, we look to the other countries and contextualise to our context. If I answered your question. Anyone would like to add?
Just a short comment, the best guideline is that one that is directly coupled with reimbursement mechanisms, for example, in our country. And that's why, for example, in acute hospital care, we try to implement all guidelines into the classification of hospital stays, D R G, and then is directly coupled to the costs and to the cost effectiveness evaluation. And for example, in a parallel session here, there is a session of a block of lectures of national screening centres. And we currently cannot launch any kind of prevention programme without H T A assessment as cost effectiveness do, and we do, we must do it, it's mandatory, we must do it prospectively.
Thank you. Related to this issue, I was a bit surprised by the recommendation for prostate screening. Because in other countries, there is not a strong recommendation for screening. So, well, you, there are issues about effectiveness and costs. So I was a bit surprised about the outcome. In the Netherlands, we have the recommendation that you can offer screening, but it's shared decision making with the patient. So it's a conditional recommendation. So how was that recommendation formulated?
Thank you very much. But let's take, for example, correct against the screening, kilograms of evidence-based literature. And it's a really cost-effective and it's a really efficient programme, how to protect people from very serious cancer. And then the second part or second side of the coin, of the same coin, is how you, how effectively and how efficiently you can implement the programme. Because it must orchestrate primary care, G P S in our country, colonoscopy units, cancer centres, et cetera, et cetera. And you can do it in an efficient way. And then you can see the cost effectiveness in the practice, reward practice. Or you can do it bad, and then the implementation fails. But it does not mean that the evidence-based medicine fails. And I think that we stand, our country and our organisation of this programme stands in the middle of these two sides. Because we still have many, many things that can be done better. And compliance of population, of course. Insufficient coverage of cancer screening, it eliminates any kind of effect.
Yeah, thank you. And there's another question, we are up from...
Let's first question from the audience and then the app, yeah. So please, Professor Rosina, what is yours?
Robert, who's a neurologist from Prague. In fact, to provide clinical guidelines, it's a huge work. If you are doing this properly, the P I C O questions and so on, you need to have many people. It's not one or two men's work, if you are prone to do it correctly. And I, in my experience, mostly the ideas to make guidelines come from medical societies. Because the medical societies detect the need of some question that should be upgraded or should be answered. And now to Professor Chen's question. I liked it very well to approach physicians to participate in guideline. How would you suggest to do it? Is there any possibility from NICE or from the state organisations or so on to promote, to facilitate? Otherwise, then to ask for medical societies, please come with your suggestions?
That's a basically fundamental question. And the reality is, as you mentioned, as you said, in real life, we are asking societies, please be with us, collaborate with us. And I remember few topics and few guidelines which were not completed. Because the approach of the society was in the way we were not able to complete it. And NICE does not have any power to, let's say, to push medical society to collaborate. If they don't want, you don't have any, let's say, chance to push them. And many guidelines are based on, let's say, some relationships between people from NICE and medical societies. To be honest, I don't think we should, let's say, look for some hard measures to push medical societies to collaborate. I think that should be mutual collaboration. And it's like, you know, if you want to dance tango, you have to have two people. If we have only one, you will not succeed.
Thank you very much. And to add to this is actually our approach. That, you know, the topics of what we have for the rapid recommendations and the guidelines we collected, they were prioritised from the Ministry of Health and directing management organisations. Also based on our analysis from the D R G team. Because then we see the heterogeneity in a provided care. From our screening national centre, who actually has the session as well today. And then, last but not least, from the professional medical societies, which we approached, and we asked, okay, what are your priorities? And those who already collaborated with us, they had a bit advantage, I would say, because they already know us, so they know our work. So they come to us prospectively and ask, okay, we would very like to do this guideline, could you please add it on a board? And that's how it happened actually for, I would say, almost 30% of the topics. You see, there are actually requests of medical societies saying, well, we would like to do and complete guidelines for these particular topics.
And what I would like to add, we are really happy to prepare, put together, search, find, surprise, synthesise the best available evidence what's there and give it to them like on the golden plate in few pages. However, without their bilingeness, without their cooperation, and not only within one society, but among societies, with all relevant stakeholders, et cetera, there's no matter why to do it at some topics.
Thank you. You have a next question?
Good afternoon, almost. Thank you very much for this inspiring talk and really supporting for us medical specialists. I'm Hannah Van Kovan from the Society of Geriatrics. And I'm really happy to hear that you are ready to support us with evidence because we need it desperately. And we are living in the time of global challenge of aging population. And we are living in W H O decade of healthy aging. So maybe a question, do you have some plan how to address this global challenge? Or maybe it's a time to plan together to prepare the reaction on aging population of the Czech Republic?
These strategies are prepared in the Czech Republic, but they are very young, I must say. And currently, for example, we are building the data bridge between Ministry of Social Affairs and Ministry of Healthcare. Two months ago, completely new plan for palliative care, end-of-life care was approved at the Ministry of Health. And it's closely coupled with money, with investments to the field. And we need some guidelines, some rapid recommendations, some basic evidence-based medicine platform, how to organise the social and medical care segments of care. Without it, you cannot get the money to support your clinical practice. So I think that it's a very strong incentive for medical societies, professional societies to participate. There are millions of Czech rounds.
Thank you. And there is a last question which came online from Jassan Shatri, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Medical scientist from Indian Council of Medical Research, Regional Medical Research Centre. And the question is, can you expand on the difference between guidelines and the policy brief in terms of the methodologies used? I understand the end user are different, but it seems the processes are quite similar. Yes, for this, I can answer that ideally, we have the rapid recommendation done for the topic. And if not, there is something what I, from the beginning, considered myself a mistake. Because I showed to our director and our minister that we can do something fast and dirty. Since that time, he wants everything fast and dirty. But now I understand and appreciate why, yeah? Because there are really huge heterogenities we see in our care. And he is a leading institute of health statistics. Actually, we see all of these unnecessary results which could be avoided when actually we have the guideline recommendation. So I fully understand why the fast and dirty is important. Important also rigor and robust, and we're trying to find a way. So for the policy briefs, we basically are able in a fast and dirty, really prepare evidence summary. You know, it's a question of the days. Depends, of course, on what's the source evidence. So if we ideally immediately find high-quality guideline, that's easy. Systematic review, that's easy. If not, the rapid recommendation may take us some time. Depends on what's number of published articles. So with these words, I think we can close this session. So thank you very much for being here with us. Thank you very much for your activity and participation in the discussion. And yeah, looking forward to collaborate and create better guidelines to improve lives. Thank you.